All right, we've got all the members here. We'll call this meeting to order. It's the Town of Brookfield Planning Board Monthly Meeting. It's June 12th, 2023. It's seven o'clock. Role call. I'm Tim Straz. Ed Ingles.
Here.
Terry Ward. Here. Gus Stratton.
Here.
Harry McMenamy.
Here.
Rich Zachary.
Here.
Everybody's here. We have no alternates at this time. Well, we do. Marshall's here. We can swear.
Marshall, you're finally here to get sworn in.
Welcome.
Don't swear at me.
It's better than getting sworn out, I guess.
Yes, yes, yes.
You need an alternative?
Hey, we could always use another member because we have a vacancy here, so.
Oh, okay. Then I should do. Marshall, come on. That's getting sworn in.
Yes, absolutely.
Will I say your name?
Hi, Marshall Goldberg.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Swear and affirm.
Swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me as.
Incumbent upon me as.
Planning Board alternate.
Planning Board alternate.
For the term of one year.
For the term of one year.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of this constitution and the laws.
Of this constitution and the laws.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
So what we got?
So.
And when you're done, just like that there. I already were going, so it's filled in. All right, you're in.
Thank you.
Marshall, welcome.
Welcome. Welcome, welcome.
First question, first question, Marshall, is would you like to be a voting member of the board tonight?
Sure.
Excellent. You're, you can vote tonight. That's right. All right, we'll move on to public comments. We have the public comments.
Is there any comments on anything?
Yes, sir.
Bill Nelson, my wife Joan, 98 Lyford Road, Brookfield. We have a concern with the solar panel that's been put on the corner of Clark and Lyford Road. And its placement, distance is back and everything, and we would like to know where you folks stand and what our rights are regards to that.
So with regarding to the zoning, we do not have anything specifically for solar installations. However, because we don't have anything regarding that, all the required setbacks or any kind of structure would have to be followed. So I don't know if this has been brought to the building inspector, the code enforcement officer, and the selectmen. And we're in the process of communicating officially about the setbacks.
Okay.
It's much too close to the property law, in our opinion. When it's flat, it's got to be at least 20 feet from the property line, not the edge of the road.
Okay.
And we've started that process by documenting our concerns.
So I ask if that, have any feedback from the owner of the property is?
We get feedback from the installer.
Oh, the installer, okay.
Trying to, trying to explain that if they keep it vertical, it meets the setbacks. But it goes horizontal in certain conditions and then it doesn't. So in our, in the selectman's opinion, it's in violation. It's got to be, it's got to be moved.
Is that the one across the street from the contents and Gary Wallace?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I've wondered about it.
Yeah, I noticed it myself.
We never, you know, never, not that they had to, but we never approached and told them, say, this is going in. And we have to look at our window and look at the thing, I think, that had been placed in a better, that's what is the owner, a better place on the property that would not offensive to others. But that's just right. It affects our property value, so it's a concern we have as well.
Yeah, all you do is make it comply to the setbacks.
I'm going to begin.
Someone told us to check into commercial, that if they sell, I'm confused by it, but.
Oh, the power grid and how it all works, yeah.
With surplus, selling it back to the public service.
Does that make it a commercial operation? No.
No, I didn't think so, but.
That's part of the deal. I mean, that's the value of doing solar. It's part of the value of one by one wood. Because it's available to anybody.
And not arguing with you, I don't mean that, but so if I put something in that was commercial on something totally different, could I do it? I mean, I'm going to put a little stand out there and doing it out of business, I couldn't do it.
And Hattie Ody is the only person you can sell it to.
But so they know that.
At this point, we don't have any zoning regarding.
Oh, non-sufficient.
Yes, yes, I totally understand.
I understand where you guys are coming from. It's very frustrating to us as owners and see our property value deteriorate. But I just, and it sets a precedent for the town, for other people. I'm concerned about that. Somebody did it and affected your, one of your values of your home, I don't think you'd be happy either, so.
Do you have a relationship with that?
Man, once, a couple years.
So, no.
He never came.
No, no, I know, I'm just saying.
I stopped by once and maybe last year, but other than that, I don't know, they put a porch on the back.
If they have to move it based on the setbacks, you might want to have a conversation before they do anything, right? And just say, geez, you know, maybe you didn't think of it, but it's a nice sort for us. If you have to move it, maybe you could.
Are you on the other side of Clark?
Yes. And I, we, I know there was work going on there. We had putting in porches and all this stuff. So I thought, well, maybe it's a swimming pool or something, who knows? I just got to put there, never a million years left that somebody would do that. They never told me. And they put it in fast.
Yes. It was all of a sudden, I know. I went on my friend also, I was like, whoa, when did that happen?
And it's up there and I just was concerned.
I just want to bring up to the board members that we're not here to problem solve any of the issues in this for barely to speak on in regards to the zoning.
Yep. Well, thank you for listening to us.
You're welcome.
Appreciate whatever you can do.
You're welcome.
Somebody will post, keep us informed of what happens.
Watch the selectmen's meetings. It's happening there.
Yep, the enforcement will happen on the selectman level.
Okay.
We just set the guidelines and the rules.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much.
I'm busy late.
Thank you for coming in.
Do you want to assign anything over here?
I've captured it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to announcements, correspondence, mail, which we have done.
Missing books.
Yeah, review and possible approval of minutes from May 8th, 2023. I made the motion to accept the minutes as presented, except for that I accidentally marked as the date on the minutes, and I'll amend it to May. Do I have a second?
Well, given the chances, changes, I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, please say aye. Aye. Oppose. Anybody abstaining?
I wasn't there.
Yep.
But I'll accept them. I see them reasonable.
Perfect. All right, old business. We have RSA 155E discussion. I reached out to the town lawyer, and she's very agreeable about joining us for a session, joint session with the selectmen to discuss 155E, as well as any other issues we would like to discuss. I guess the next, unless there's other discussion or questions about the subject, is there any feeling about when a good time for people to meet that I can propose to her?
Often do they selectmen meet, that once a week or once every two weeks?
Well, this would be a non-public session that we would have with the town lawyer. So it would be ourselves and the selectmen in a joint meeting, so we could schedule it at any time.
Doesn't have to be the same times as these, as the regularly scheduled meetings.
It does not. We did the, we had one last year, I think it was on a Wednesday afternoon, like four o'clock. So we can do much the same, can propose a date later this month.
Yes, we like, we like Tuesdays. We meet first and third, so second and fourth are generally open. But if that doesn't work, play it by us.
We'll try, maybe like four o'clock or something.
But it won't work for you guys.
Tuesday, the 20th? Would you try? I'll, I'll pose that to her and see what she says.
I can't do that.
You can't do that one? What would you like?
The week after, maybe. But we need to do it right away? The 27th or three, Tuesday?
That's the fourth Tuesday, right? Yep, last.
Yeah, we meet the first and, first and third, so the 20th was bad.
Okay, so 27th. So let's, let's shoot for the 27th then.
Four o'clock?
Yeah, four o'clock. Nothing, I'll confirm. And then we, aside from discussion of 155E, is there any other items that the, you selectmen have those items they would like to submit to me perhaps, and I can include that, that could bust?
I will ask.
Okay. Any other items besides that we, as a board, we would like to get some insight into from her?
I'm sure we'll add to that.
Good.
Because we've talked about multiple things, I have to look over.
We'll make that the primary discussion. Very good. All right, the next item is the master plan. So I spent some time over the weekend trying to capture some of our notes from a few years ago and the new combined into one document I still have.
Excuse me.
Still have three or four sections that I have to capture notes from, but I think a big part of that one was the inclusion of the historical society. They wrote a really good piece in there that I dropped in. How do we, what do we want to do about the master plan and how do we want to pursue working on it?
I think.
Yes, sir.
It's so out of date. I think we take the sections that we have, which I think about 50% of the sections have been updated.
Yep.
And publish it with, publish it with the current, with the updated sections and leave the old ones in there.
Okay.
To get something out.
Okay.
Something out.
All right, we can do that. I think there's a couple of areas in there in which their population estimates, as well as actual population density, that was pulled from SRPC. I don't know how we want to address that. I don't think we have a relationship with them to get that data.
So we just have the last census data.
It's SRPC?
What is that? The Stratford Regional Planning Commission out of Rochester. I think we're the northernmost town in there.
In Wakefield.
In Wakefield, yeah.
We don't pay our dues because we didn't feel we were getting much value from it. The feeling was mostly attention goes to Dover, Worsmith, your big cities. They contribute, well, not hundreds, but they contribute thousands and thousands of dollars, so they get a lot of attention. Our $900 didn't buy us much. Why aren't we familiar with Carroll County as opposed to Stratford County? Well, it's not really based upon county, it's based upon areas. Oh, okay. And we used to participate with Lake Region, and that was out of MRF. And we felt like we were often there also because they were focusing on all the big lake communities and those issues. Got to you, you know, so there's no good, we felt we were really no good fit. So we switched to Stratford.
So the historic stuff was just added in here recently, is that right?
Yes.
Yep.
I think we proceeded it a couple years ago from Mary Lou, she and the historical society that put together that document. But the other sections have been, I had, Terry was with me at the time on the board. We had gone through and we had marked up sections, and so I updated those per our markups.
The conservation group was going to give us a write-up if we ever got that right up.
Right, we did not, no.
So things like the fact we, we don't have, I don't know, maybe you guys have discussed solar and what, what that means and is it just setbacks or is it other things?
Yes.
You know, it's like technology things like the internet now, and I don't know if that's in the master plan or it's in some other documents.
So we're responsible for two documents, the zoning ordinances and true.
Oh, the zoning ordinances.
Which are, which are, which would be a lot of the items you just mentioned would be captured in that. The master plan is a, is a advisory document that the state requires the town to update periodically in order to capture the intent and purpose of the residents.
Right.
And it's not officially a legal document, but it sets the guidance for, for the town. And if any issues were to come up, say, you know, where somebody questioned the intentions of the town with regards to land use and all of that, they could look back at the master plan to show previous intent and direction.
So it's not a legal document, but it is a requirement.
It is.
Of a town that's incorporated.
Yeah, so we, yeah, it doesn't go to vote.
Right.
For the town, we just have a public hearing and then we adopt it.
And the last one we have is what? 2006.
2006.
Yep.
We need, we need something.
I remember.
So it's almost 40 years old.
Conversations about that a couple years ago.
Yeah, so we did a survey.
You were doing a section at the time, right?
Yes, yep, so we're back. I think a lot of during, during that time, Terry, when we were reviewing it was, we were looking at the demographic information that was supplied and we're, and we were looking around at each other and going, wow, they projected you'd have like three or 400 people join the town by 2020, and it was like 50 people.
They expected a 49% growth rate.
Right, and so it has not internalized in that.
It was 604 back then, so what is it now, 670?
No, 712.
752.
752?
760.
Yes.
Okay, so we gained 150 people.
Since 2006.
Since 2006.
So we were kind of looking at it going, well, the rural nature still holds true. You know, a lot of the things that were in, in the introduction and like in the vision haven't changed in, you know, almost 20 years.
So if you looked at the land use that's available in Brookfield and you did a rough back in the napkin estimate, how many homes? I mean, I know that's households, right? 700 and whatever.
No, the people, that's people.
That's people, that's not households. So do you know, I mean, I'm just curious, I mean, could only 1,000 people ever, ever live in Brookfield is the question, just out of curiosity.
Well, certainly a lot of land is.
It kind of depends on whether class six and five roads become five and three, right? Because you can't put houses up on the dick road or whatever.
But you can take pieces of property, large parcels, put a private roof and subdivide.
Yep.
Right, that's where, I mean, if you go north into town, there's large, large parcels that could be subdivided.
So there's a lot of land, but there's also a lot of people who have no interest in developing that.
Yeah.
Or selling.
Or selling. It's a lot of. I mean, I would assume so.
Yeah, yeah.
Cute, interesting.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Maybe it's cosmetic, but if the ship has already sailed on this document, I'm fine with it. It's not. The document is, there's some pretty good parallel structure in here where like, you know, I'm just looking at number two, protect rural cultural landscape. Implementation, identify, integrate, consider, promote, conduct, promote. So those are all verbs. And then we have this history. Our oldest building here is, it's like a narrative, it's not, it's not a, it's not consistent with the rest. So I would maybe suggest taking that and sticking it in the appendix and just saying.
Certainly.
You know, something that's more consistent with the way it's written.
Absolutely.
More of the backstory.
The format, yes.
Like, we don't really need to know that there was a law in Article 1947 that put in the lights. That can be.
Well, we pretty much agreed a couple of years ago, it was very verbose.
Yeah.
One more reason to put it, because it starts reading.
Yeah, it's a, it needs to be taken shortly.
Yes.
But I guess my concern is we could lose the year, it's already June, right? So if we're going to get on, we have to get on, do the Worsmith thing and make it presentable.
Right.
It's done through 205, did you say? 205 or whatever.
Yes, yep, yep.
I'm happy to take a look and edit it up to there.
I can look at how to share out the documents. Now I moved it over to the One Drive, so I should be able to share it with folks to.
Or you can just email it to me and I'll do it. It's in Word or something?
It is in Word.
Yeah, I'll just, okay, send it back to you.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess we'll, we'll roll it till next month, then I'll add a couple more sections and we'll keep going. Great. So the new business is commercial solar, which was brought up at the meeting, end of, end of last meeting. And certainly, you know, the issue brought before us today was about a residential condition. But Mr. Zachary brought up at the last meeting about how some of our neighbors have commercial solar ordinances and whether or not we should because we have available rural land that could be used in such a way.
Well, maybe it should just be treated as any other structure and it must be required to follow setbacks regulations. I mean.
Wouldn't it follow like the similar, like the wireless tower, all those rules and the wind?
I think we would.
Or a building.
Kind of mimic off those?
Yes, we would need, yes, we would need something similar to that, for sure.
The gut argument was we don't allow commercial projects in town. We could just say not allowed.
Well, I mean, don't, shouldn't we start with the residential? I mean, I would think that would be the starting place because we have that in place for wind. Wouldn't we also have a similar option for residential solar, especially because it's hot right now?
Yeah, but it's quiet. There's no wind turbine setting and noise. You know, I mean, it's just this thing sitting there quietly. I thought you were going for a pun there.
Just being, just being solar, skin itself.
We have a commercial enterprise in town. It's a, it's a horse farm, but you know.
Agricultural.
Agricultural, but isn't that qualified as commercial or?
We call that agricultural.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I don't have to worry about that then.
You're a horse.
You're fine, guys.
You're a horse farm.
It's all right.
You're fine.
Okay. Residential, agricultural.
Okay.
The horse farm is agricultural.
So I think the concern would be we're a residential agricultural community. What if somebody said, you know, out behind Ed's home there where he's got great southern exposure, they went and clear cut five acres and then they just put solar panels across the whole five acres.
A solar field is what you have to worry about.
Right.
Right.
Especially in these more rural areas.
Right.
That's going to happen soon.
Right, which if people, I don't know if you're aware, but Lovable just went through, Lovable Maine just went through this last year. They had a, somebody had done exactly that, cut the sidewalk down, five acres, put in, supposed to put in panels, and it was approved, so.
So Terry, you're, you're thinking, let it go as long as it meets the setbacks? Based on what you just said?
It's just a structure. That's how we would look at it, and we can't, I mean, I would have a hard time holding somebody back from trying to take advantage of, of efficiency and, and, I mean, you can't get any cleaner than a solar panel, other than what it's on.
But I think there's a difference between residential and commercial. So if someone's, you know, doing it for themselves residential, but for commercial, it's different, then it kind of opens up so many other things.
Then, then maybe we can put a restriction on what the surplus that they generate can be. I mean, we're not against you doing this.
Because if it go into the whole business thing, like it could end up being.
Because then it has to, has to be this huge array, then obviously it is a business in that case. But if it's just enough to feed the home and they get, you know, 20% leftover, that's reasonable.
That's residential.
Well, no, that's just part of doing solar, right?
Yeah.
So that's not an issue in my mind. It's more about, do we want to have solar fields?
The fields, yeah.
Yes or no? If we all agree we don't want to have them. We would move forward with the appropriate actions so that that wouldn't occur.
So like the wind turbine and as well as cellular ordinances that we have account for not just the structures themselves, but all the secondary things that go along with it, whether it be for, you know, for a storage wireless transmitter, the building that has to house the equipment, whether or not it has a generator, you know, how do you get all the electrical to it? All, all those items, those would be things that would be, have to be accounted for in a commercial setting. Just all the secondary things that we don't know about that may require, you know, a transmission line, depending on the size of it, that has to be cut through town to get to the grid in order to feed the electricity.
Thank you. Do we have permissive ordinance or a not permitted?
There's permissive.
Permissive. OSIPs is permissive also, and what they do is they, they use variance by default in each project.
Thank you.
So I think today, commercial is not allowed. It's just not allowed by our zone. I think Terry's point, residential is, is a pressing issue. I think we should take a look at the residential, and even if we create something, it doesn't take effect until March, next March if it passes.
Oh, wow.
Definitely.
I mean, the one on Clark Road is interesting.
Okay, she don't think about it that way, right?
I guess I haven't seen.
Yeah, I always think about it as you're putting it on your roof, right? I mean, that's just where my brain goes. I don't think about, oh, I'm going to add more panel, I just don't, you know, but obviously there's nothing wrong with it, it's just, and I'm sure towns have put in ordinances around that already. So it's not like this is an original, ah, moment, right?
It is in Brookfield, it's very, it is in Brookfield.
Well, no, I understand that.
Right? Yeah.
I'm just saying to, right, to you.
Well, that's kind of why I mentioned that maybe the amount of surplus is what we can regulate to, to ensure that it does maintain that residential.
Right.
You know, once you get over 40% surplus, then it's, now it's a business because you're selling as much as you're keeping or, you know what I mean? If we find, and that limits the size of these arrays. If it gets beyond the residential, yes?
Is it okay, I see?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Brian C O 339, what do I, I think you need to put something in place because the minute that the state of New Hampshire starts to incentivize solar, which they don't now, but the minute they do, inevitably it's coming, so you might as well be ahead of the curve rather than behind it. And I think you're right, the, the preponderance of people that are going to build, overbuild the solar panels, be able to sell back to the grid, which again is not incentivized in New Hampshire, you can't do it, you don't make any money. You can do it, you can give it, but you don't make money, you don't get money back, you don't get money off your taxes, you have nothing like that. That's going to happen eventually, and you're going to have to have a plan in place to be able to handle it. Because if somebody wants to put in a solar panel around their house and sell back a budget, mega watts or whatever it's measured at, back to the system, they can't, there's nothing you can do to stop them really, unless you put a cutoff and say residential is residential, commercial is commercial, commercial is considered above this. unless you put a cutoff and say residential is residential, commercial is commercial, commercials considered above this. And then the other thing that's coming, will probably be coming, is they'll be incentivizing farms, agriculture. Where I lived in Amsterdam and overseas, farmers got 50% off on their land property taxes if they put in solar panels and things like that. So you'd see giant farms with huge array of solar panels, and that's going to be coming too. So you might as well be ahead of it, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't know a lot of research on that.
No, it's great. $27,000 to put, put solar panels on my roof.
Well, we certainly need a town input on that one, I would think.
Yeah, well, I think we're at the beginning stages of this one. Like, we, I think we'd have to do some research here. So certainly, you know, these are good items that have been brought up. Definitely the commercial within a residential agricultural community is an important one to figure out. But also, if we had some of this year's land use regulatory books, we could look and see what the solar code is from the.
Was an item from the department with the lawyer.
Yes, absolutely.
What about the structure itself? I don't know if anybody's been up to the one that was in question earlier, but if we have some kind of height restriction or even do away with standing ones, you have to have a flat on your roof or something? Is that, that one is pretty ugly, and if you had 700, well, how many households do we have? 300 of those in town would look pretty disgusting.
Well, there's already one right down the road here, right? It's right on the side of the yard. What's that, 50 feet from the road edge, pretty much? And that's in town, right?
That one's been there for three years now.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I mean.
Which one is this?
Right down.
Town Governor's Road.
Yeah, Town Governor's Road on the right inside there by that old ranch.
They got a variance to put that there because it was too close to the property line, but the condition was, you have to hide it from the road. And they're trying, well, they're in the process of hiding it, that wasn't specified, and you're going to hide it now quickly. So it starts roaming to hide it, so you shouldn't be able to see, that was the goal.
But there's precedent right there.
But the one up there is, I don't know, 15 feet tall or whatever, or more, and it's twice the size of this table.
I'd say you'll take a ride up there.
I feel bad for the neighbor, that's why I was speaking. It's bad.
Alright, so we'll continue this discussion next month, hopefully we can add this, we'll try to add this as a topic with the town lawyer, but also I would ask the members just to kind of do some research of like towns, any of the, maybe guidance from the state on this for zoning purposes.
So would that be like a law article or something? You have to have the town to vote on?
Yes, if we're going to add a new zoning ordinance, we would have to, you know, we would come up with the language with the town lawyer, then we would have a public hearing to present it, and then it would go amended if needed, we'd vote on it, and if we voted to add it to the ballot, then it would go in front of the voters. Yep.
So I can see Laura, the attorney, asking us, what's our bias?
Yeah, there isn't any bias here.
Do we want, do we want to have it all, do we want them everywhere? Do we want them on roofs only?
I don't think that people, I mean, I would be, it would be so not in sync with what, I don't think everybody in town would want them everywhere. You know, I think the majority feels as like, as we feel on that. I mean, but that's just my assumption, so maybe we do need to get feedback.
Absolutely.
I'd be perfectly fine if you had it on the roof.
Right.
But if you have always stand on things, it looks like if you're in Everett.
Totally, that's what I thought.
The pre-scanning units are awful really for special situations where people don't have an optimal orientation on the roof.
Correct.
So, you know, I think we're going to be stepping on people's toes by telling them they can't do it. There's got to be some happy middle ground where if they, if that, they really want to go solar and the property doesn't give them enough exposure, then we may have to make some accommodation.
Yeah, or there's, you know, we could regulate by setback. And if somebody is deemed that they don't have an optimum location because of the setback restrictions, they could go to the ZEA and get a variance. So there is a mechanism for people to be able to try to satisfy their needs.
Or you could just say maximum 10 feet high, eight feet high, and you have to hide it from the road, whatever.
Yep. Good, well, this means we should do some research, because certainly there's other communities in the state that I'm sure face this. Excellent, alright, moving on. Member comments? Wow, quite rude. Seeing there are no more comments, our next meeting is scheduled for July 10th. This meeting is adjourned at 7:36.